Now, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Ms. Lopez. Now, we're moving to item number three. Mr. Tony Ramirez, please proceed with public comments.
Public comment provides opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on posted agenda items for this meeting. We will invite pre-registered speakers to speak. They may only address the Board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda. Speakers should state their first and last name, the organization or group they represent, and the agenda item they will speak about. For this meeting, we have three in-person speakers. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. Thomas, will you please cue the timer? Our first speaker is Henrietta LaGrange, followed by Yentor Tu and Cassel Greis.
Thank you, and good afternoon. My name is Henrietta LaGrange, member of the Mulberry Street Girl Gang, Lulac, Growing Up Brown, and Rasunida, also Mind Shift Education. What I'm going to talk about today is the fact how more handsome my CEO of CPS Energy looks. I like that look because it makes him look younger, and he has to look young because we know that CPS Energy is no longer in a dilatory... Oh, did I say that right? He has raised, with his character, CPS to where it has not been before. I'm proud of you, Mr. Garza. He deserves, Mr. Garza. And thank you, Mayor Nuremberg, for being here, too. And Saturday, I had fun at the Police Academy, so they're trying to recruit me there, so we'll see what happens. But Eliana Bell, is she here? Ball? Let me tell you, that lady walks on water. She is amazing, and I don't know how she does it, does it, but I want to have coffee with her because she is really, really amazing. And I know that Mr. Medina is going to speak, and I know that he himself is an amazing, and I'm proud of him. I'm also proud of Richard Lujan, who also has a difficult time carrying that trophy that he owns because he is also great for this organization. And thank you, Chairman Gonzalez, Vice Chair Romero. Thank you all for allowing me to be here today.
Thank you for your input. Our final speakers are Yentor Tu and Cassel Greis. Thomas, please cue the timer for four minutes to allow for translation services.
Hello, everyone, and hopefully you're having a good day. I want to introduce myself as Yentor Tu. I'm the founder and CEO of a deaf agency here in San Antonio, and I wanted to just give you a few pointers. I wanted to thank you all, first of all, CPS, when the community helping... I know we're going to have another, host another event this Thursday. I know that we're going to be learning a lot, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity. My second comment is going to be about, I'm going to say, I've only been here for seven years, but I want to thank CPS for allowing us to host different events. And I want to thank you all for making sure and repairing and doing all kinds of wonderful things for our community, especially where we live, going out to the community. Thank you so much for serving the community. Third, I wanted to go ahead and let you guys know that the deaf agency here in San Antonio has already officially received so many honors, and we want to thank you for working together with us, planning emergency routes, doing different activities and events. Hopefully, we can continue to work with you in the future. Lastly, I wanted to introduce Mr. Cassel Greis. Hello, everyone, and thank you. I'm honored to be here with you. I'm a pastor here in San Antonio of the church that's called Family Deaf Church. Very excited to be a part of this community here in San Antonio. I know it's very important for us to be here to help the community through CPS Energy, so I wanted to thank you for all your work that you've been doing. And I know that Yentor has introduced me here, and I know it's very important to be able to, be able to touch the deaf community as well, and in God's name, we will be able to do that. Thank you so much. Thank you.
That was our last registered speakers. I will now turn the meeting back to Chair Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Item number four, which is Chair's remarks. A couple of things. There's always a lot to say because there's always some really great things happening here at CPS. So May is National Electrician Safety Month. So, as you know, CPS is a leader in safety and wants every employee to go home safe at the end of each, each day. We ask that of our citizens as well. So this year, National Electrician Safety Month, organized by the Electrical Safety Foundation, will feature awareness on how to purchase, use, and recycle lithium batteries safely. Lithium batteries power the devices we rely on every day. A specific example are the devices that we use, such as cell phones, tablets, laptops, electric scooters and bikes, toothbrushes, and backup batteries. It seems like that's one of the key battery types that we use. When purchased and used correctly, lithium batteries can provide a valuable service, but there's always a risk, and the risk is to fire and injury if, if uncertified batteries and chargers are used. We encourage all to learn more, and we're sharing some of this information on the screen and how you can probably use and dispose of these batteries. Is the information on the screen? I don't see it. But the point is, it's important that we, again, use certified batteries and chargers, and it's important that we dispose of them correctly. Summer, we just got a taste of what summer will be like this weekend. And so with the temperatures getting hotter, we're also, would like to remind everyone to take steps in properly hydrating and keeping yourselves safe during this summer, anticipated hot summer. Keep in mind that the city of San Antonio has cooling centers. Keep in mind also to reach out to nonprofit organizations for seniors, especially when they hand out fans. And let's just take care of our seniors as well as our, our animals out there. CPS Energy crews are in the heat every day, and I know they will watch out for each other. Make sure you keep yourselves safe. And then, of course, we look forward more to learning this during this board meeting about summer readiness. So big wins, a lot of big wins that took place. And so first, I want to just take some time to reflect on the accomplishment, accomplishments over this last month. Since we last met, CPS Energy closed on the acquisition of the national gas plant in Corpus Christi and Laredo. I want to welcome the new 66 new employees through that acquisition at those plants. We also secured 52 megawatts of additional carbon-free nuclear generation through the additional 2% ownership of South Texas Nuclear Projects, known as STP, along with adding 200 megawatts of firm capacity for our portfolio. We also launched a Community Input Committee application process, and we continue to work through that process to transform this community group. It's important, I will tell you, for my area, I've only gotten one applicant, so look me up. It's important that you participate. I'm looking for some applicants for my particular area. And again, this is your opportunity as a citizen to participate through the process and be part of the CPS Community Input Committee. And so these committees matter because it's your voice. We also received a $2.45 million grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation to safeguard gas infrastructure on the West Side of San Antonio. But more importantly, we received news from Fitch and SMP affirming our credit rating and revised our credit outlook to stable from negative. They see CPS' hard work and their commitment, and our commitment to change for customers through the five-year strategic plan of 2027, and that is a big deal. And again, this has been a collective effort here in our citizens, as well as doing the right thing as board members and working with you executives here at CPS. It's been a long journey, well-earned, and congratulations to all of you who have participated in that. And again, I want also just a quick shout-out to all the graduates for college and undergrad high schools. I know Ms. Elena Ball had her, her daughter graduate, and it's such a big deal for kids to graduate in today's environment. We need more educated workforce, and so congratulations to all of you out there. And then I just want to, again, appreciate the focus of the team to identify, you know, again, opportunities to make this organization even better. So those are just my talking points, and if anybody has anything to add to that, this is the time. No? Okay, then we're... Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
I just wanted to call out and, and add to your remarks about the upgrade that CPS notified us about in terms of its credit. I don't want to understate the importance of that to the community and how difficult it has been over the last several years to manage through what has been a global economic crisis. But the fact that CPS now has been recognized as a leader, not only on the delivery and service side, but also in terms of financial management stability, I think it's something that we've got to take a moment to properly credit everyone who's involved with that, obviously, from the, from the top down, starting with our CEO, but the board as well. The management of this organization through some very difficult times has been nothing short of, of, well, I, I, let me not overstate it. It has been a true team effort. Everyone has contributed, from the board all the way to the folks out in the field, and then to the people who, who enable us to do this work and who benefit from the hard work, our, our community that supports this organization. Let's just take a moment to be grateful for all those efforts. So congratulations to everybody.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Gonzalez. And Mayor, I say this respectfully, that was not an upgrade that we received.
We went from negative outlook to stable, is my understanding. Is that correct?
Right, but there are two things. There's, there's a grade, and then there's an outlook, and what we did was...
I prefer to see the glass half, half-full, especially in the challenges that we've, we've seen. This is obviously an improvement in the financial condition of this, of this organization, recognized now by those organizations and experts in finance. I'm not going to debate whether that's good news to you, John. I think it is.
Okay, and that...
Let me get a good understanding of this. Mayor, you just recognized the company for moving up from Fitch to negative to stable? Am I right? I'm just confused about that. Is that not good? I, I don't know, but, you know, because I, I think about this is that here we are purchasing all these, these three plants down in South Texas. Am I mistaken about that? And Ms. Gonzalez, and you just mentioned that we got 52 megawatts of carbon-free, 200 megawatts from STP, $2.5 million grant from Westside, for Westside, San Antonio, and when we go stable, I think that's a tremendous accomplishment because I remember my first board meeting that we had 100 and something speakers after that storm, and that we've made tremendous moves in the last three years. I think we're accomplishing some tasks. I'm not saying we're there, but we're making some good moves in our financial and the business. So all I can say to the staff, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess we're going to continue. So if we could go to item number five, which is the consent agenda, and we have the following items. A, payment to the city of San Antonio for April 2024. B, minutes from April, regular board meeting held on April 22nd, 2024. C, procurement items, professional services, substation and transmission engineering services. Mr. Richard Medina is bringing that...
First, Ms. Gonzalez, move to approve the consent agenda, A, B, and C, professional services, item five.
Is it roll call?
No, 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 no. We got, he's going to talk. Somebody have something to say?
I don't, I don't know yet.
I'll treat that as calling for discussion.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and poll the trustees. Chair Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
I called you Chair Dr. Mackey. I'm sorry. It's muscle memory. It's old. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now move to regular agenda item number six, which is community committee reports. We have A, Audit and Finance Committee, AF, meeting held on April the 15th, 2024. That's led by Chairwoman Janine Gonzalez. B, Employee Benefit Oversight Committee, EBOC, meeting held on April 15th. Again, that was led by Chairwoman Janine Gonzalez. Does the board have any questions or comments? And if not, they will be accepted as submitted? Pause just to make sure there's no questions or comments? All righty, then we're going to go ahead and accept them as submitted. We'll now move to agenda item number seven, which is the Vision 2027 Generation Plan update by Mr. Benny Etheridge and Ms. Elena Ball. If you could both, please proceed.
And again, agenda item number seven is Vision 2027 Generation Plan Update.
So good afternoon. Wow. Good afternoon, trustee, chair, trustees, leaders. Elena and I prepared a brief update for you today on our Vision 2027 Generation Plan status. I'm going to talk a little bit about where we are today, and then Elena's going to talk about our future, the progress we're making. So plan overview, accomplishments, status, next steps, and then opportunities beyond 2030. Bottom line is, we're, we're moving the ball forward and feeling pretty good about where we're at. This is an overview you've seen previously. It just shows you the steps we'll take along the way. We're in 2024 now. We've completed some additional dispatchable resource procurement this year, moving forward with renewable for delivery, and we're moving forward with discussions on the Brunnig Unit retirements. So we're on track. Quick overview of our accomplishments. We've got 522 megawatts of natural gas online, using it today. We've got four solar contracts for 730 megawatts in place and working. We've got a contract for 50 megawatts of storage. We've got, we added 84 megawatts of wind when we renewed an existing contract here in the past month. Looking forward, we've got requests, proposal out for our community solar with Jonathan's team. We've got 480 megawatts of storage that's in flight at this time. And as you all know, we recently purchased 1,710 megawatts of dispatchable generation to the south in Corpus and Laredo, and we're starting to move forward with the commercialization of that effort. And finally, we've got teams that are working through specification development for the Spruce II gas conversion and some peaking units that we intend to build under our plan. And of course, I guess finally, the 2% additional ownership share in the STP project, so nice 52-megawatt pickup there, along with a power purchase agreement. So the team's been busy and feel like we're making good progress. We, we prepared a new graphic for you with the help from Melissa's team, CorpCom, to show you where our assets are, to help you visualize. As you can see there, our, our solar assets are probably spread the furthest, and that's, that's by design. As, as you all know, cloud cover hampers solar output, and so by spreading out our footprint like that, we've, we've increased our return from those assets. Wind farms, you can see, we've got two inland, and we've got the four along the coast, of course, our natural gas plants. And when you look at all that in total, we're fourth-largest generator in ERCOT now. We put this slide together to give you an update on the status of our program today. Excuse me. As you can see there, we're, we're heading for 1180 megawatts of solar, and we've got 732 nailed down and working, 500 megawatts of new wind, and like I said, we just picked up an additional 84 megawatts. 1,050 megawatts of new storage is planned, and we've contracted for the 50, and we've got 480 megawatts in flight. New nuclear, we picked up 52 megawatts there. Our gas repower is not technically started yet because we're still in the design phase. And finally, new gas generation. We, we, we just picked up a nice chunk, and it's, it's really good to have it, I'll tell you. And there's 440 megawatts still in flight for the peaking units that we're working on today. And no movement on the retirements yet, and you can see our schedule along the bottom. Yes, sir?
I was about to say, if any trustees had any comments, because I'm sure you're looking at the charts, and you may. Go ahead.
I'm looking at that new gas. I see the 1940, understand that 440?
It's additional.
Oh, the 440 is two peaking plants that are under development today.
Where's that coming from?
Well, so that's TBD, where we've got a, a team looking for locations that we want to install those at now. We're reviewing our options.
Okay.
I did, I did have one specific question. So it's good to say we got 200 megawatts of this, and we got all these, like, shiny new cars, right? But what does it really mean? Translate that in layman's terms for our citizens. What does that mean? Does it get to power 100 more homes to reduce, you know? In layman's terms, what's the value proposition to our customers?
The value, as I look at this, we got ahead of our plan significantly with the acquisition of the units in Corpus. So we have way more capacity than we need today, and we're still pushing that into the market as our demand catches up with us. So we're securing revenue from those assets, and we're using that revenue to help fund our program and help fund improvement of those assets. So we're way ahead of the curve, I guess.
Yeah, and let me just add to that. You know, with, with, we've, we've been thoughtful, and, and I'll tell you what I've said around the state. You know, with the older gas units that we, we relying on right now for reliability, and they're all over the place, they're not just ours. Other generators have gas units that are, that are vintage. They got to come offline at some point in time. You know, the older they get, the less reliable they are. So you got to question, how reliable is our system really if we're relying on those old gas steamers for, you know, for reliability across the system? So what this has done is it kind of leap steps us into, you know, probably by a decade of our generation plan. We were going to have to build, going to repower Spruce, build probably a, a large baseload plant, 600-megawatt plus, plus the peakers. And, you know, and what we've done really is take that construction risk off the table, Chair. So, you know, we may have to build another, a large gas plant down the road, but we pushed that decision point off. The 1,700-ish megawatts that we've acquired, you know, we've got three times the amount of capacity it had to cost. So by any measure, it was a good deal for our community, good deal for our customers, and it's given us time to decide what comes next, to allow technology to catch up and to advance, and, and our, and our strategy remains diversified. So when you look across, you know, that portfolio, we are still very much a diversified generation mix, and that's what we're looking for.
Glad you pointed that out. So a couple of things I think I heard is, again, we, our initial plan was built. In this case, we're able to save some building costs because we did acquisitions of, of entities, and that reduces the need to do that. The other one is, again, the capacity to handle San Antonio growth. As we know, we're the largest city that grew the most out of our nearby neighbors. The other thing that I heard is, in all of this, we're still, we're executing a plan again to what the board has supported, which was a mix. We wanted a mix, not being reliant too much on one or another mix. We have a mix of, again, everything from solar to gas to, again, storage, which was some of the newer technologies. So what this also allows us is by advancing through these acquisitions, we now get to see where sort, where, let's say, storage goes. So now we're able to figure out how to, you know, maximize that for the future while other things go away or grow. So what I'm hearing again is, through these acquisitions, we are saving, we're saving dollars that we don't have to invest today but potentially could use it somewhere else. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, very much. As Rudy has indicated before, we, we got out in front, we bought these assets, we got them five, six years ahead of when we could have built them, and we, we paid half price.
Okay. This is good information. Does any other colleagues have any comments? Dr. Romero, please.
Thanks, Benny. It's ice nice to hear from you. Just a couple of questions. So as, as solar and wind is acquired, at what point do you say it's online? Because I, I'm a little bit confused about between when we have the contracts to, to generate it versus the distribution capacity for it. So, so when you say it's online, that means the distribution is in place as well. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Online means the project is complete, it's been commissioned, everything's hooked up, and we're ready to go, and we can accept delivery of the power.
Okay. My second question is about storage, and I just want to understand that a little bit more. So as we get storage capacity in place, is that committed to particular sources? Like, is, is one storage capacity limited to just the solar that's coming in from here, or it's available for any of the renewables coming in?
Actually, the storage, when we did our test project out of Southwest Research, we tied it to the grid, we tied the solar project to the grid. So we store electrons. Okay? If you're matching your solar generation width, then you're storing renewable electrons. Otherwise, we can just store energy off the grid. And that's going to be important later, I think, as we seek to operate a more responsive grid and get longer-term storage in play. We'll, we'll need all-in, for example, to charge during low-price periods overnight. Whatever electricity is on the grid, we want to buy. We may not have solar then, but at the end of the day, we'll be able to charge our batteries and deliver during the day.
Mayor, any other additional questions? Comments?
Yeah, sure. The only thing I would, I would say, Benny, is that you made, you made the comment that we have more capacity than we, we need right now. I would square that with the messages that ERCOT is sending us, that we need to use less energy so that the state can keep the grid lights on. I understand how all that plays together, but I think what we need to do is make sure that the community that we serve, our immediate customers, understand that we're building capacity because of all that stuff that's coming offline.
Yes.
But that, at the end of the day, if we're only using X kilowatts in San Antonio, we'll only deliver that on the grid unless we're forced to. And if we are forced to, then we're going to acquire that revenue from outside of our system to the benefit of our customers here. So I don't want anyone to get the impression that we're adding all this generation capacity just on a whim, that this is stuff that we actually do need.
Sir, you made a great point. That's a great clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, and it goes back to, you know, with the, with the older generation that we're, that we're planning to bring offline, you don't, you know, year, year for year, you know, build and, and replace. We've, we've gotten ahead of it. You know, now we've got a few years to prepare. These are younger units. We're going to run the younger units and put the older units on the sideline and run those only for reliability purposes. Now we have that flexibility. So it actually makes the system more reliable because we're using more efficient generation in the meantime with these new units that we've acquired. So it's the right plan, it's the right approach to take when you're planning for retirements to, to get, acquire some generation sooner than you need it so that you have the flexibility to move those megawatts off the system when, when the time comes.
I do, and I don't want to belabor it so we can continue to move on, because I know there's some more meaningful feedback from both of you that are presenting today. So we mentioned Laredo, we mentioned Corpus again, and so what does that add to serving the population as far as citizens are concerned? Are we responsible specifically to provide, again, support to those communities, or are those plants only serve a very specific niche? Just want to clarify.
Well, the plants serve what they serve. You know, the, the, all these plants support all the load in South Texas, including ours. You know, but I will tell you, as a, as a community-owned utility, we are going to be active in the Corpus Christi and Laredo communities, just like we're active here in San Antonio. That's who we are, it's what we do. That's who we are, it's what we do and we're already making inroads into building those relationships down there. So the communities that we're operating in can expect CPS Energy to be good corporate partners.
So no different than any other organization that has a focus on regional growth and regional support?
Exactly.
Okay, just want to be clear on that. Okay, so we can go ahead and continue with the presentation.
Okay, thank you. So as we look at our generation plan, you know, basically we break it up into three areas. We've got our existing fleet, that's a full-time job, right? Operational readiness, workforce transition, and finally, our retirement process. We've got new generation, which we've talked a lot about here. Flexible gas generation, solar, wind and storage, and then effectively integrating that into the grid. And finally, we've got the ERCOT market redesign. There's a lot of things in, in flight, as you all know. Portfolio modeling and analysis, we're seeing a change in grid. So we have to look at things a little differently and we're starting to think through that now. And then finally, there's the risk management. It's, uh, things are changing as we move forward, our resources are changing, transmission grid topology is changing. A lot of things are on the table and the strategic planning is really a good segue into Elena's discussion. So I'm gonna turn it over to her and let her talk a little bit about where we're heading strategically. Thanks.
So, um, we're transitioning now to a part of the discussion where we're really forward-focused, thinking about the future. And I think it's very important that we lead off to talk about carbon. What you'll see on this slide is our transition toward our community expectation around achieving net zero carbon emissions by the year 2050. Cliff Notes version, we're not there yet. The steps that we have taken, you've, you've just heard about some of them relative to our acquisition of the Talon Energy assets, as well as our successful settlement around South, the South Texas project have essentially taken the retirements that we expect to, to effectuate and replace that with capacity now. Additionally, because the assets aren't brand-new build, they're not gonna run 50 years. We expect them to run fully 25 years, but what that does for us is positions our portfolio to have continual decreasing carbon emissions while also preserving optionality in, in the next two decades. And that's really critical because the industry is, is, is seeing unprecedented investments, innovation and technolog- technological innovation and, and transformation that quite honestly, no one can predict where the technology is going to go. And so you'll see in the upper, on the right side of this graph, what our carbon emissions intensity is and where it's projected to be with these, these asset acquisitions. And so, um, in the year 2024, where we're sitting, um, we're emitting as, at a portfolio level about 850 pounds of CO2 per megawatt hour generated. As we move away from coal and increase our renewables, our storage, as well as incorporating these gas assets, we're going to see over time, in, in very short order, that we are going to dip to a third of that, getting, getting closer to 300. So the takeaway here is we're not only, um, yeah, I think Rudy summed it up beautifully. In round numbers, our generation plan for the, for the gas capacity is going to cost 1.8 billion dollars, is gonna show up in several years from now, and they were gonna run 50 years, all right? In, in a very quick order, due to the terrific work of the entire team, we've able to, we've been able to bridge that gap with $785 million in expense and, and, and allay the construction risk associated with new build. So we basically got the capacity in the forms that we wanted at a fraction of the price. Um, and that's why you see helpful steps such as all of our credit ratings agencies coming out and market parking is stable. It's because of all of the teamwork, the good work going on across the organization. And they've, S and P actually cited these acquisitions as a de-risking mechanism and part of their decision to move us off.
Can you repeat those numbers again? The 1.8 million and then you said something else I could barely hear.
Yes, ma'am. I'll move closer to the mic.
Thank you.
So our existing, our, our generation plan that was approved by this board last year called for, um, new build of gas assets. That was going to cost us 1.8 billion dollars. And right now, lead times for construction for turbo machinery as well as construction labor are putting new build at a five to six-year pace. So we would have paid more, it would have come later, and we would have run longer. And so, uh, with this acquisition, we're acquiring the 1710 at 785 million dollars. That's compared against the 1.8 billion. And we have the assets now generating, um, and, and I would like to highlight one other point that wasn't covered in the previous discussion. Not only are we solving for the gaps that are created by the, the retirements of, of plants that are 60s and 70s vintage, but we're also going to be able to keep up. Our community is growing at 150 megawatts per year. That's a small peaking plant per year. And that's not even including the larger loads in the form of data centers, nor is it including transportation, electrification.
Can you repeat that again? Cause this is a good point. This is what was missing from earlier when I asked a question, what's the value? What does it actually mean that someone can relate to what this means?
We're bringing capacity ahead that we had planned for at a lower cost that will replace our retiring units. It also positions us to be able to keep up with growth. Our community is growing at 150 megawatts per year. That's a peaking plant per year. So this allows us to do both of those and preserves optionality in 25 years for technology innovation that can help us not only drive down cost, make better use of our renewable assets, but also decarbonize at the pace that our community expects.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So while we're talking carbon, this was, this, I'm an engineer, so this is a super nerdy graph. I don't expect y'all to, to memorize this, but I wanted to talk about carbon for a minute and lift our conversation out of our community, right? Talk about it at a national or state level. This is something called a Sankey diagram and you don't need to know all of the details in it, but what I wanted to articulate is how this graph works. This, this is actually publicly available information. Lawrence Livermore National Lab prepares this for, for the entire United States and every state. And essentially, it's looking at how do we as, as society, how do our, how do we consume energy? So this particular graph is the state of Texas, energy consumption in 2021 in, in brittle, British thermal units. So again, I don't expect y'all to memorize this, but what I want to articulate is we talk about decarbonization, it's not just about the electric sector. We're a huge piece of it. If you look at the top orange box that speaks to electricity generation, that's the space that we operate in. But you can see, we're only producing about just shy of 5,000 trillion BTUs out of the 14,000 that the state consumed. So as we transition electric generation to lower carbon sources, we need to recognize that the full carbon picture spans all of these other industries. So as we focus on that top box, I want to mention a couple of things. One, we're seeing transportation now move from petroleum-based to electric, not, not exclusively, but we're gonna see more consumption coming through electric generation. And at the same time, you know, we're, we're working to decarbonize the electric sector. So I, I, I would, I would also be remiss if I didn't mention, um, many of the large commercial and industrial users in the state of Texas and quite honestly, in the world are also on pathways to decarbonization and they're doing that through electric, right? So we are gonna see continued rapid growth of electric consumption. So it's a one-two punch on carbon. If we can keep up, decarbonize our value chain and do so in an affordable manner. And this is my last slide and then we'll obviously take any questions that you all have. Um, we're really proud of the good steps and the teamwork associated with our recent actions and it's yielding benefits across our whole organization. But wanted to, to remind everyone where we were back in 2010 and where we're headed to 2050. And so, you know, in 2010, we, we took a number of steps, um, such as the D-ley coal closures, um, adding wind and solar, uh, we, we put in advanced metering. We also formally adopted our step and conservation program and the community cap goals were established. Where we are today, um, you know, obviously, we are in the midst of implementing the generation plan, thoughtfully prepared and approved by this board. Um, and, and we're also again, continually focusing on conservation and, and ensuring that all of our generation planning activities and steps are done with our community because we are of this community and we serve this community. And so we want to make sure that these significant steps that we're taking are, are in lockstep with what our community expects. As we look beyond 2030, there is a lot out there. I spend my days and nights eating, drinking, breathing, all things power. And so, um, as we look to 2050, first and foremost, conservation is gonna be the best form of energy. The best form of energy is the energy you don't have to produce. So that's gonna continue to be a staple as we move forward in the future. Um, you know, we talked about the thousand megawatts, 1,050 megawatts of, of storage that we're seeking. Predominantly right now, what we're seeing are, is short-duration storage. So think about a battery that can discharge from two to four hours and then it's empty. There are a lot of interesting technologies that are being developed, which are much longer in duration, from many hours to days. Those aren't commercially viable, uh, but we certainly are going to take steps with our research and development efforts to look, partner and pilot these, these storage technologies because quite honestly, they are the holy, long-duration storage is the holy grail to integrate renewables in, in a sustainable manner for the long-term. We also, in conjunction, you all may have seen recently, um, Rudy and the mayor and General Driggers signed a memorandum of understanding for continued development of clean technology with, with JBSA. And so new nuclear technologies are something that we are keeping keenly aware of. There are 54 small modular nuclear reactor designs in the world. We are looking at, at all of them. We have team members, a big, big shout out to Brett Colby who's on our team. He serves on the nu- the advanced nuclear task force at the state and does a terrific job representing us. But nuclear is going to continue to be part of our future. Geothermal, hydrogen, there's, there's a tremendous amount of work in, in how do we create hydrogen, store it and utilize it? Fuel cells, it's something that I've, I've, I've actually implemented fuel cell projects and it's, it's a technology that it, it, it really bridges a lot of the challenges that we have. Storage to grid, I'll list, you know, I'll list the others there for you to, you guys can just read them, but want to let you all know that we're not resting on our laurels. I'm worried about beyond 2040. 2040 to 2050 is when we really have to make some significant steps and, and, and it's gonna take thoughtful deliberation in setting that long-term strategy in place with this board and with our executive team. And, and we're really excited to embark on that path and ensure that we do so in an inclusive manner with our community. So with that, that concludes our presentation. Be happy to take any questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Steen.
I'll, I'll let Dr. Mackey go ahead, yield ahead. All right.
We spoke earlier.
So I want to begin by expressing my appreciation to Chief Energy Supply Officer Benny Etheridge and Chief Strategy Officer Elena Ball for their presentation today and, and for the exemplary work, the exemplary way both handle their critical CPS Energy responsibilities. So if someone would put up slide three. Focusing on the timeline running horizontally through the middle of the page, would you all clarify whether the years shown are calendar years or fiscal years?
So those are calendar years?
All right. May I suggest that if you continue to display this chart, you indicate that somewhere on the slide?
Yes, we'll do that.
So in 2025, you're showing the retirement of the Brondig Natural Gas Units 1, 2 and 3. And for those listening in, I'd appreciate it, Mr. Etheridge, if you'd summarize your retirement efforts thus far, including our ERCOT submission and the status of that submission.
So yes, sir, as you suggest, we've, uh, we've reached out to ERCOT, we have filed the appropriate paperwork and we filed it early in order to give ERCOT additional time to complete their analysis and allow us time to take any remedial action necessary. And so that, that process is in flight. ERCOT has notified us that they would need additional time to do this assessment. And in fact, they saw it and were granted approval to extend the, the response to us until later this year. I, I, I don't think they set an exact date, but their plan is to firm it up towards the end of the summer, I believe.
And so I, I believe, and you all correct me if I'm wrong, that the Brondig Units 1, 2 and 3 came online in 1966, 1968 and 1970 respectfully. And so they're 50, they're, they're 58 years old, 56 years old and 54 years old respectively. And I understand that the lifespan of a gas-fired power plant can vary depending on several factors and some are technology choices, operating conditions and maintenance procedures. But please remind me what you all consider the lifespan is of each of these Brondig units is.
So sir, we, we look at those units and we look at the condition of the unit as opposed to the, the, the years of service necessarily. And what we see is that the investment required to bring each of them to a position where they would continue to be safely, safe to operate exceeds what we could ever hope to earn from them. So it would be a losing proposition for us to continue to invest more money in them.
All right, but I asked for a lifespan, can you, can you answer that or is it, is it?
So I, I can tell you it's 50 to 70 years. I had plants in the Northeast that we pushed out to 70 years, but a lot of additional money had been spent on those plants in a regulated environment where they didn't necessarily look at returns. Please.
I, I'd like to add one, one item and it's market-facing. So when you look at the changes that are occurring in ERCOT and throughout the world, we're seeing rapidly changing wholesale market conditions. Efficiency matters, right? Efficiency matters. These units were, they were, they were Benny and I's vintage, right? Sorry about that, Benny. And so they've earned their AARP card. They have some of the highest heat rates in ERCOT. So they're the last units to be dispatched because they're so inefficient. They pollute more, they use more water and they're inefficient, not because they're bad, it's just they're old. It's old technology. So investor-owned utilities will fully depreciate gas assets on a 30-year basis. Benny's right, there are some times you can run gas units 40, 50 years, 70 is a stretch. I've never, that, that seems high, but, but it, it's not just time-based, it's condition-based and it's market-facing. So I, I just wanted to add that additional color.
Well, and I'll just add another element. We also have a climate action and adaptation plan that we're accountable to, to our community that has to factor into this equation as well. All of this was part of the rate advisory, rate advisory commission's deliberations in recommending a generation plan to this board, uh, which he took action on. That included these, uh, you know, these retirement dates as part of the strategy. So, you know, we are on, you know, plan with what we've committed to the community. ERCOT's gotta tell us whether or not they'll allow us to, to continue to, I mean, to, to retire them or, or require us to run them, at which point the state will pick up the cost of what it takes us to make those investments and not our customers, which is absolutely the right thing to do as well. Saddling our customers with millions of dollars of, um, maintenance on plants that are, you know, at, uh, or nearing the end of their useful life, um, you know, this is the responsible thing to do. ERCOT asks us to keep them going, then the market will pick up the cost of, of what we have to do to, to make that happen.
Good, thank you. And, and by the way, Ms. Romero, may I request that we add to our action item list, maybe is, is a, is sort of an addendum to the Vision 2027 Generation Plan Update. We provided a list of our generation facilities showing when each unit was put in service and what its lifespan is. And it seems to me that this is relevant data when you're recommending to your trustees that 3,326 megawatts be retired in the next five years, so.
Let me just be clear, we're not recommending that. This board has already voted on a plan that includes those dates.
Well, you did recommend it, did you not?
The board has already taken action.
Right.
On that, which we're executing to.
What I said.
It's not a recommendation at this point, it is the policy of this board.
Right. You recommended it and the, and the board adopted it.
No, if we're gonna state it correctly, the board, the majority of the vote voted on it.
All right.
And we're executing, not that he, specifically he, we did through process.
All right, I, I grant you that.
Again, not an issue for adding that to the denim, make sure we're clear though. The board authorized generation plan mix and also has agreed to support cap. The board did that.
All right. Please keep slide three on the screen. CPS Energy recently closed on the purchase of Talon Energy's natural gas plants in Corpus Christi and Laredo. As we've talked about, the price tag was 785 million. Costs to bring these plants into the CPS Energy fold have to be in the hundreds of millions of dollars. So unless you all correct me, I'm gonna refer to it as a billion-dollar acquisition. correct me, I'm going to refer to it as a billion-dollar acquisition.
I led the deal team, so I'm going to answer this question. That is not correct. The units have been in operation. They continue to operate. The only difference is, from April 30th to May 1, we began receiving the revenues and and being responsible for scheduling and operating the plants in lieu of Talon Energy. There is that we are going to invest dollars over time in the plants, just like we do with our existing fleet. The price tag was 785 million dollars, subject to also customary closing adjustments associated with our with their accounts receivable. But it was not a billion-dollar deal.
Okay. Well, I stand corrected. I thought that that there were going to be substantial amounts of money associated with integrating those plants into our system.
Teams worked terrifically on a really very short timeline, and in a matter of weeks before the close, aligned all of our fuel contracts, aligned all of our transportation contracts. The HR team worked all of the employment matters, onboarded all of the employees. And effective May 1, all of those team members and assets are part of the CPS Energy team. There was not a billion-dollar deal.
Okay, thank you. Now let's
I want to, you asked a question. I want to get there.
Okay.
I don't want to ask, I don't, no, it's your question.
I don't, just wait, let, go ahead, Mr. Steen. An order of conduct. Mr. Steen, continue to finish, and then we'll go ahead and open it up.
I'm glad to let Dr. Mackey jump in if you, but, okay, all right. Now, let's look at the the very last line on page three, which shows the retirement of one of the units CPS Energy has just bought. And it's scheduled to occur in in four years. And that's because the Barney Davis Unit 1 went online in 1975, almost 50 years or half a century ago. It appears that CPS Energy is buying, as part of this purchase, a plant that will, according to the plan you're presenting today, be retired four years from now. So please put up slide four. And I want to focus on that seventh checkmark where it refers to the purchase of 1,710 megawatts of dispatchable generation. So of course, Barney Davis Unit Number 1's 292 megawatts are included in the 1,710 megawatts. In fact, it's 17% of the megawatt total. And as noted, it's scheduled to be shuttered in four years. So please address this.
Yes, sir. I really appreciate the very thoughtful questions and appreciated your questions last week, as we discussed the different capacities. The Talon Energy, Talon Energy made a strategic decision to exit ERCOT. They're selling all of their assets. They were not selling portions of their assets. They were not willing to pull the portfolio apart. The vintage unit is what I'm calling it, because it's exactly the year I was born. So I think vintage sounds nicer. The vintage unit of Barney Davis 1 is absolutely in commercial operation today. It was included in the purchase price. We valued it very differently in our analysis than the combined cycle units because we knew that when we brought that unit in, it was going to be scheduled for retirement in in the next few years. And so no different than what we just discussed relative to the Brannick units. And so it does have a little bit more life. It's older. I mean, excuse me, it's younger than the Brannick units. But this isn't, there isn't any, we're not playing a shell game here. These are assets. All assets have a useful life. All assets have characteristics that that create value. Barney Davis 1 is going to create value for us over the next few years. We have not committed definitively to that four-year retirement. That's what we're modeling, okay? And we're going to be looking at conditions in the market. We're going to be looking at our growing community, and we'll make decisions very thoughtfully. Your your comment about buying an older unit is spot on. The portfolio itself is going to give us a tremendous amount of value. As I mentioned, that 1710 was purchased at 785 million dollars, two combined cycle units, two quick start units, which will run for 20, at least 25 years and potentially beyond.
So please put up slide eight. And and this outlines a pathway to 2050, the transition to net zero carbon emissions. And that first bullet point reads, inclusion of the newly acquired CPS Energy South units have lowered our CO2 emissions intensity compared to the previous fleet.
Yes, sir.
Please explain that to me.
Yes, sir. So as we transition to lower, I'll speak at the portfolio level, and then I'll answer your specific question about how these units behave differently. When you look at it from a fleet perspective, we are stepping out of our highest carbon emission generating units, which are coal units. We will be coal-free by the end of this decade. And we are adding more efficient natural gas. As I mentioned with the comments around Brannick and Barney Davis 1, those are less efficient technologies. So as we transition and shutter less efficient technologies and incorporate more efficient technologies, such as the combined cycle units in Corpus Christi, as well as the peaking units in Laredo, the net impact to our portfolio, as modeled compared to today, our carbon is going down. Additionally, the 52 megawatts of nuclear that we will be bringing into our portfolio, once we get the license transfer application approved by the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, will further reduce our CO2 as a, at the portfolio level. Does that make sense?
Well, that does. But what what I'm asking for the meaning of that, you're saying inclusion of the newly acquired CPS Energy South units, that's Corpus and Laredo?
Yes, sir.
Have lowered our CO2 emissions intensity compared to the previous fleet?
Yes, sir. I'm not, could you restate the question? I'm not, I'm not
Here, let me, let me try here. Well, we're taking old Brannick units that are less efficient and higher emitting, and we're replacing that base load generation with newer, more efficient units. So just based on the fact that we have these assets added to our portfolio today, when you look across what's going to be running and what's not going to be running, we're going to be running more efficient units, which brings our carbon intensity down. That's what that bullet point means.
I think he understands that. I think if I, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Steen, but I think it's like, why are we stating that it have lowered it, right, when we just got them, right? I think that's what he's alluding to. But if we got them on May 1st, effectively, May 1st, they already lowered them. We're already May 20th. The fact by ownership, but I don't want to speak on, please continue. Ask for clarity.
Yes, ma'am. I guess what what I'm asking is that because these plants that we're closing down, the Brannick plants emit, right? And so now we've acquired these plants in Corpus Christi and Laredo that they're going to emit. Are you saying it's going to be less?
Yes, sir. The steam units at Brannick and the steam unit at Barney Davis are something called a 10,000 heat rate. Basically, it's how many British thermal units you need to produce a megawatt of power. And the units that we just bought are 7,300. So they're almost 30% more efficient than these older steam technologies.
Okay. So it doesn't have anything to do with geography, the fact that we that we're moving emissions away from Bear County and into, you know, in a sense, into Oasis and Webb Counties?
No, sir, it isn't. It's all thermodynamics, right? So we're moving from a single steam cycle to a combined cycle that drives efficiency through two machines versus one.
All right. Thank you. And Ms. Gonzalez, I just have just a few minutes more. Should I should I yield to Dr.?
Yeah, we're going to yield to Dr. Oh, she did? Okay, great. Does anybody else have comments before we go back to Mr. Steen? You can wait. Go ahead, Mr. Steen.
Okay. With regard to today's Vision 2027 Generation Plan update, here's a snapshot of my overarching concern. As our CEO Rudy Garza has said repeatedly, there are only two fundamental ways to pay for all this additional Vision 2027 spending, by taking on more debt or by increasing the base rate on CPS Energy's customers. In both instances, there are storm warnings. Let's take our debt. At our March 23 board meeting, CEO Corey Kojinski revealed that CPS Energy's debt has swelled to 6.9 billion dollars. And as we should all know by now, our debt capitalization ratio, our big three leverage metric, where lower is better, continues to exceed the 60% threshold historically set by three credit rating agencies, and disturbingly has been projected by Mr. Kojinski to to increase to 67.8% in fiscal year 2029, notwithstanding every two-year rate hikes baked in. No telling how much higher our debt to capitalization ratio will be driven by recent financial commits commitments, such as the Talon Energy acquisition, not to mention the future acquisitions contemplated by today's presentation. I'm apprehensive that unless all this spending can somehow be reined in, we're on a path to becoming over-leveraged. And what about more base rate increases piled onto our customers? Last fall, Mr. Kojinski confirmed that we're planning every two-year rate increases, including 5.5% in fiscal year 2027 and another 5.5% in fiscal year 2029. Yet for the last two years, 20% or one-fifth of our residential customers have been in arrears. So how much more can CPS Energy ask these beleaguered customers to shoulder? In essence, what we're dealing with here is the financial shock, or more specifically, utility bill shock to retail customers from climate change-related transition costs. And finally, I was concerned to read in a recent S&amp;P Global Ratings report that for fiscal year 2022, of the 212 U.S. public power retail, electric, and gas utilities, it follows CPS Energy ranks number four for most debt, again, fourth highest of 212. And it should be noted that this was for fiscal year 2022, when CPS Energy's total debt was 5.89 billion dollars, whereas today, according to recent financial information provided to the trustees, CPS Energy's total long-term debt now exceeds $7 billion. Further, according to CPS Global Ratings, focusing on the top 10 U.S. municipal retail, electric, and gas utilities with the most debt, lamentably, CPS also has the fourth highest debt to capitalization ratio. So in closing, Ms. Ramirez, I respectfully ask you to reflect in the minutes my ongoing concerns with the many costly acquisitions, projects, and programs CPS is committing itself to, and my fear that we're on a slippery slope of borrowing too much and burdening our customers too much. And thanks, that's all I have on this matter at this time.
The only, again, you can go ahead and add those to the minutes. I just want to make sure that before we add those minutes, those are accurate statements. And I could be wrong. I could be wrong. But for example, I believe when you presented, or specifically Corey presented, we're not just going to automatically do rate increases. It's all subject to based on so many other things. So again, I don't, I don't, I don't have any concerns with specific concerns about debt to ratio, but we should not be entering into the minute statements that are not accurate. That that would be the only thing. So I would like to make sure that we we fact-check that, and then no problem with submitting it. But to 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 say that Corey specifically said this, and it's not a true statement, I have a concern with that. I don't think that's fair to Corey.
Chair Gonzalez, would you, would you allow me the professional
Yes, please.
responding?
Please do.
First, I definitely want to concur with you that we need to crosswalk what was stated in the meeting and absolutely reinforce what management has represented. Is our debt increasing? Yes. Okay. We have old things we've got to shutter. We've got to have new things. If we do not build, not building or not buying is not an option, because the other option is you ride the market. Our utility peaks at about 5,700 megawatts. That's that's our peak load, okay? ERCOT's maximum price is $5,000, right? So if we get a hot day, and we're at 5,700, and we have not made the decisions and do not have generation, that's 28 and a half million dollars an hour. If it persists for a day, that's $700 million, okay? So to not act, to not make these choices, means to expose our customers to the most elastic retail and wholesale electric market on the planet. And we experienced that during Yuri. We do not want to repeat that.
Well, not only that, if we're relying on the market, the market has already told us they don't have enough capacity to keep the lights on in Texas. So that's not good enough for our customers. But I would like to ask a question based on, I mean, what I consider to be very inflammatory comments about possibly being over-leveraged. So
Mayor?
No, John, I have
That the mayor
And I didn't say we're over-leveraged. I said we're on a path to being over-leveraged.
We can be respectful of the mayor, please. We provide it to the platform, mayor, please.
Even if it's just an opinion, I would like to know that when we're speaking with rating agencies, again, that have marked every single public utility negative outlook, and now has just recently revised ours, when we're talking to them about our financial condition on a look-forward basis, are we sharing with them our generation plan?
Absolutely, we are. And we're showing the long-term view as well. So the numbers that trustee Steen is referencing, we're showing them the long-term view, and they specifically are calling out the strategic benefit
Okay. Because last I heard, every single meeting where we're talking about major strategic decisions, investments, our Vision 2027 plan, that starts with a statement of values. We start with those values of resiliency and affordability. When we make decisions, we're making it based on long-term customer affordability. If we did not have to make these investments in new generation capacity, we wouldn't be. But the cost of doing nothing, as we have seen, because we've been through a period in this utility where we not, we were not planning for the future, the cost of doing nothing is far greater on our community and our individual ratepayers than being on a methodical plan to increase capacity, to meet demand, and also do it in a way that's that's cognizant of their environmental realities. Maybe it's because you care about the environment, but it should be also about the cost of not doing that are far more substantial nowadays because of the regulatory environment that we're in. So, you know, again, nobody likes to see the the debt to capital ratio going up, but it's a period of investment that we're in, and we're doing it in a responsible way to make sure that long-term, our customers still see the most affordable public utility bills in the country, which they are, and they will continue to be. The other thing is, I understand we're high-ranking in terms of debt for a public utility. This is also the largest public utility in the country. So the fact that we're not the largest debt load despite being the largest company, I consider to be a very good thing in terms of stewardship of this, of the financials of this organization. That's all, Madam Chair.
And Chair, if I may, the, in terms of top of the list, I think the important factor recognized is that the totality of our financial health and strategic purposes, all included, as you indicated, Mayor. And so when it comes to ERCOT, whether it be investor-owned utilities, municipals, co-ops, CPS Energy remains tied for the highest credit rating, given our current status and given the forecast that we mentioned. And the benefit is, as you mentioned earlier, is that we got revised to stable while showing the credit rating agencies everything that we showed them. So just punctuating the point that it is the holistic view, and we are being recognized for that.
Just a correction. Okay.
Dr. Mackey, go ahead.
Madam Chair, a few years ago, I attended the rating agency in New York, and I would recommend that if other board members would like to attend when they go, I think it's good for everybody to know and be a part of that. So
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Steen.
Mayor, just a clarification, we're not the public, largest utility in the country. Yes, but it's it's because we own both electric and gas. We're the largest of that type of utility, but not the largest utility in the country.
Well, you made the statement in respect to the size of our debt. So we have debt on the electric side. We have a debt on the gas side. So it's respective of the the size of this organization.
So I want to, we've talked a lot about this.
Because the last, the last thing before, I just want to get one to be clear, you wanted to add those comments to the minutes, I believe. The only thing I wanted to make sure is that we fact-check those comments, because you're there, Corey. I don't believe you saying that we're just going to rate, do increases with no further discussion at
Yeah, no, as we've
Like a subscription, if you don't provide a 30-day notice, it just gets renewed. We, I don't believe that's what we do at CPS. And so I just want to make sure we fact-check whatever's entered for permanent record. Go ahead, Mr. Steen.
All right. And this, this won't be long, but but there's been a lot of discussion and comment on on this recent credit rating agency situation. And first of all, I think our CEO, Corey Kojinski, does exceptional work, given the challenges he and his team face. CFO, what did I say?
Said CEO.
I think he'll be a CEO one day, but not now. He and his team faced in light of the, not, I'm not talking about your position. I'm just talking about he's a, he's a up-and-coming CEO. His team faced in light of the strategic direction in which his company is being taken. So yes, S&amp;P and Fitch revising their credit outlooks from negative to stable is not an insignificant step in the right direction. To remind everyone, in the aftermath of Winter Storm Yuri, well over three years ago, all three credit rating agencies downgraded CPS Energy and two of the three and two of the three placed the company on negative outlook. As many of you know, there are three outlooks that are used to indicate a ratings agency's view toward the likelihood of a rating change, and in most cases, the probable direction of that change. So a stable outlook, which CPS Energy is now in the case of all three credit rating agencies, is assigned when the agency believes that the rating is not likely to be changed. A negative outlook indicates a rating may be lowered. Of course, at the very minimum, we need to be setting our sights on a positive outlook, which indicates a rating may be raised. So while I appreciate Mr. Kocinski's efforts, I remind you that in regard to all three credit rating agencies, our downgraded status continues to this day. And what our three credit rating agencies are telling us by this stable outlook is that the current downgrades are not likely to be changed. You're laughing, Mayor, but this is the...
It's quite a way to twist some news, John.
No, I say after nearly three and a half years, that's unacceptable.
Well, okay, I understand that. But if you're suggesting that all of a sudden our outlook being improved is an indication that the company is in worse shape than it was yesterday, I'm saying that that's not the case.
I did not say that. I said it's a not insignificant step in the right direction. But in fact, when it says stable, it's saying it's not likely to be changed in the future.
First...
And we need to be upgraded.
I think we've belabored that. If there's anything to clarify again, please, this is the time. If not, again, I want to thank again everybody's input. Ms. Steed, again, we'll enter your notes, make sure they're fact-checked. Thank you for all the comments. We're going to go... Oh, I'm sorry. And the most important person needs to speak, and that is Dr. Ramirez. Please go.
I'm not the most important. I have a very small question after all this big discussion. I just wanted to ask a clarification on Slide 8. As we go forward in time, does that chart already control for the increased demand that you already talked about?
Terrific question. This chart is actually an emissions intensity rate. And so absolutely, we're baking in our projected load and load growth when we're modeling. However, this is essentially our carbon emission rate on a per-megawatt-hour basis. So it's not looking at our total generation and our total load, but those are included in the modeling. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because if there's an increased demand overall, it would be reflected in the hourly demand, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's exactly right.
Okay. Does it also control for temperature extremes over these years?
So we, when we're modeling generation, we do not take a look at temperature, because it's hard to explain. We use normalized weather generally, but we do stress test and have a higher-than, you know, higher-than-expected rate on heating degree and cooling degree days. And then we also do a muted. We actually are in the process of updating our modeling right now, as we speak, on some other matters we're looking at. And we are intending to stress both our plans around increased load, because the data centers that are showing up are intrinsically different. AI is more thirsty from an energy perspective. So we're stress-testing both how many heating degree and cooling degree days do we have, because weather is getting more extreme, and we're also stress-testing our load assumptions. I hope I answered the question.
You did, thank you.
You're welcome.
You guys answer our questions. This is great, and as expected for me, and I really thank you for this. I wanted to say something because we are the representatives of the community. And as people are watching this, I want to make sure there's no misunderstandings. So Ms. Ramirez, stop me if I'm saying something I shouldn't say. I think it's completely appropriate that we are asking for clarifications in this public setting, because the questions the public has are some of the questions that we're asking here, and that's important. But I don't want the public to think this is the very first time the board has ever become aware of some of these new acquisitions. Because that would seem strange. And it occurred to me that people at home are watching this and saying, "Oh, is this the first they even knew about this?" And the answer is no, because we are briefed on this at earlier stages where it cannot be publicly discussed, but where we are able to ask questions and present our concerns. And we definitely have given our input on this at an earlier phase. It is not just being presented to us for the first time as something that's already done. So that was it.
Thank you. I did have a question for Cory. Cory, I'm sorry. Can you, again, just repeat what was presented to the rate agencies for them to make the determination? And if you can kind of clarify a little bit, because a little bit about what Ms. Steed touched upon, but I think what's more important to me is if you can please clarify what was presented, what did they consider?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, we spent no less than an hour just on this topic with all the rating agencies. And we hit a lot of the high points that you've heard Alana mention. You know, number one is that we had a plan that this board approved, and we anchored to that, that had...
Just real quick, when you say board approved, what year was that approved?
23, January 23, when our board approved.
January 23.
I believe that was the board meeting.
Okay.
Yes. And so they're well-aware of that, and obviously, they, you know, they looked at that. That's kind of their anchor as well. They knew there was planned retirements, they knew there were planned additions and build. And so when we had this conversation, we basically discussed kind of the incremental benefits. One of them being, as Alana pointed out, we were able to pull out about 1,500 megawatts of planned build that was in our plan for $1.8 billion, which was in the forecast they received, and replaced it with the 1,700 megawatts at 785. And they saw all that.
I'm going to stop you real quick. When we said it was already pre-built into, was it pre-built into the budget? Was it pre-built into the 2027 plan?
It was built into the 2027 plan, but we give them no less than a five-year forecast. I think this last go-around, we gave them a 10-year forecast. But they always look at the future projections.
When you say forecast, you're talking about forecast capital improvement?
Absolutely.
Cost?
Yeah, forecast revenue and cost.
So any organization will know, hey, here's where we're spending, and this is why.
That's right. So they're looking at forecasted projections of financial ratios as part of that look and analysis. And so when you, you know...
So, so if you're giving them that information... I'm sorry, now I'm speaking too loudly into the mic. So if you're giving them that information, and they already know we have debt, is it plausible at that point, they're also thinking, "God, 10 more years of potential expenses, maybe we should not put them at stable, because they're spending more"? Is that a fair statement?
That's not, they look at it as you were going to spend these dollars anyways because your community needed it. As Alana mentioned, right, there is need. You can't not have generation for the assets, or for the community that we have. So that's kind of thing one.
In other words, they're not going to sacrifice investment over debt?
No, absolutely, no. S&amp;P specifically pointed out that they view this acquisition as a risk mitigation to the exposure of not having enough generation.
Thank you. If you can continue.
So we stepped through kind of the numbers part of it, and, you know, showed them kind of our NPV analysis, which was incrementally beneficial. Spoke to them about, over the long run, over 25-year window, there's a bill savings for our customers. And over that view, the net borrowing over time was less than the original plan that I referenced at the beginning for our generation. And they liked all of that. And so then, separate and apart from that, again, as Alana mentioned, kind of the other intangibles, you're avoiding construction risk, you're avoiding supply chain risk, you're avoiding inflation risk, and you've got an asset that's been proven and it's been running over time. So those elements as well layered on to the numbers were all things that kind of took in into that space. And at the end of the day, again, it's not just about debt. They recognize that we're capital-intensive. We are a large organization, so we will nominally have more debt. But they are looking at the balance of the revenue coming in, your coverage ratios, your liquidity metrics, all of that is in balance. In order to kind of get through this arc of time that we're in, they recognize that there's an acceleration and an increase in debt. I mean, Fitch calls that out specifically. But it's, that's in their review of still calling us stable, because they understand what we're doing. We're pulling forward what was in that plan. We're taking on more debt than we had planned right now, but less in the long run. And they look at us in the long view. It is not just a cute look at year one, year two. They're looking at it over time. So I think that's a brief summary.
Thank you. And is it also, if I'm not mistaken, the board comps that we received, they also took into consideration the customer debt for Winter Yuri?
They did.
They also took other things into consideration outside of their debt capital. I believe there was two other things.
Yeah, I mean, Fitch took into consideration kind of their overview of the ERCOT's risk relative to our operating in ERCOT. They, you know, it's obviously less risky than it was three years ago, so we got benefit from that. S&amp;P specifically called out the progress Deanna's team has made on the customer past-due accounts. And they're really pleased with that effort, and so they acknowledge that as well. So those are some of the other call-outs. And they also spoke about our fuel diversity, as Rudy has mentioned, about us continuing to make sure we have a diverse fuel supply and things of that nature on the gas side. They really liked that as well, and that's called out, too.
Okay, thank you very much. And again, I just, again, like Dr. Ramirez mentioned, and many of us, and this is not to justify any comments or to defend anything, the reality is, as a governance board, we approve, most of us at least, approved CAC. We approve, most of us, RAC. Most of us approve Vision Plan. Most of us approve the generation mix. And then all of us get all this information, and we make our own individual decisions. And so, again, I think it's important that we clarify that decisions are not made in a vacuum, that we all have strong opinions and come from different perspectives. And everybody, again, has a different, has a say, and should express their concerns. But I think for me, what's really important is that we clarify to the community how decisions were made, who made those decisions, and then there's a process, which is citizens to be heard. If citizens are not happy with the decisions we're making, you're more than welcome to participate and be here, and we're here to listen. So again, I want to remind people out there that if you're concerned, if a trustee, if the governing body is not making a good decision on your behalf, please participate in these meetings in any way that you can, because we're available to hear you. So thank you for that information. The next item, because we're a couple of minutes behind. Again, I want to thank all the trustees for their questions and their comments. They're all meaningful, thank you. If we can move again to number eight.
Ready? Let's, yeah, do me a favor and speak into that mic a little better. You were a little far away last time.
Will do. Yeah, I was trying not to blast you out of your chair.
Okay, good afternoon, Chair, trustees, and leaders. Working with our leadership team, we've developed a summer preparedness update for you. I'm going to lead in, and then I'll transition to Brian Alonso. He will walk us through our weather forecast. Richard Medina will follow me after I talk about the generation. And finally, Deanna Hardwick will talk about her area. So bottom line is, we've put together, I think, a very good plan for the summer. Our teams have done the things they need to do, and they're ready to go. When you look at our plans, they've all got three things in common. We focus on our people, we focus on our processes, we focus on our equipment. Learning from the past is key to our programs, and so they're a little bit iterative in nature. But we believe we're seeing good success following this program. I'm going to turn it over to Brian, let him talk with you just a little bit about our weather forecast.
Thank you, Benny. All right, so let's talk about our summer outlook. And at the time of this, this came out, this is our preliminary, but we officially got in the NOAA outlook as of this past Thursday, and it's quite similar to this. It is expected, as we go through the summer months, which is June, July, and August, where we're going to be expecting above-normal temperatures. In fact, we're already expecting, we're already seeing those above-normal temperatures even as we speak. We're already seeing those temperatures already in the 90s, when our average high temperature, especially this particular time of year, is right around 86. So yes, we're definitely above that. And I can tell you, as we head into the upcoming weekend, we're already looking at temperatures already approaching the upper 90s to near the triple digits. So yes, and of course, the humidity is going to be high. Some of those heat index values expected to get into the, almost around 100 and 910 for this weekend. Stay cool, stay cool and stay hydrated. As far as the precipitation goes, a little bit of a, kind of a different range here as far as our forecast here. We're talking about below-normal to near-normal, or I should say to what we call equal chances, and where that could be below, near, or above-normal precipitation. I can tell you that there are a couple of weather forecasts that, as we get into July and August, are calling for us to be above-normal precipitation. Now, there's two reasons potentially for that. One is the potential, and it's a lower-end probability, that we could see a, what we call a cutoff load that would be situated out towards the desert southwest, and that would essentially send energy in our direction, that would give us chances for shower storms. But the higher likely probability is that we could see potential tropical impacts to South Texas. So that's something that we're going to have to monitor, especially as we get into the July and August timeframes. Now, let's talk about what's going to be happening, like I said, with what's going on in the tropics, because I think that's going to be really the big story as we go through this upcoming summer. So kind of a little bit of a refresher course. Let's talk about El Niño and La Niña. El Niño is what we had, especially over the winter months here. And that's typically where we see the warmer waters of the Equatorial Pacific, especially off the coast of South America. And now we're already starting to see the transition into La Niña, where the waters are starting to cool. And when you get cooler waters in the Equatorial Pacific, the waters, especially out towards the Atlantic, get a little bit warmer. And at the same time, we also look at what we call a little bit less wind shear, where you've got winds changing direction with height and speed. So when you don't have a whole lot of wind shear in the Atlantic basin, that can help, you know, if there's not a whole lot of it out there, that can cause those tropical systems to maintain their strength and speed. But if there's high wind shear, it helps to tear those systems apart. So I wanted to talk more about what's going to be happening. So I want to kind of look back, especially as we look at El Niño years and La Niña years when it comes to Texas landfalling tropical systems. You can see here during El Niño years, looking for the past about 20 years here, we've only had four named storms to impact the Texas coast. So that's everywhere from deep south Texas, from the Brownsville area, South Padre Island area, all the way up to Beaumont. Now, when we get into La Niña years, you can see there's much more activity. You have a higher probability of seeing a tropical system impacting the Texas coast during La Niña years. And that's what we're going to be seeing as we go through later on into the summer months. There's still, we're still in a very, very weak El Niño. I can see the potential, we're already transitioning into that neutral phase. But eventually, by as we get into the summer months, yes, we will start to see La Niña popping up here. And so that's why the predictions, especially for this upcoming summer, are calling for a very active season. So multiple forecasts from various entities, you're talking about these entities from education, government, private sector, are all calling for an average prediction of 24 named storms during this upcoming hurricane season, when the average is 14 named storms. So definitely expect it to be a very active hurricane season for the Atlantic basin. And the Atlantic basin encompasses the Atlantic Ocean, Caribbean, and Gulf of Mexico. Now, with that, a little bit more, Colorado State University also does their hurricane predictions. And they're calling for about an 80% chance for a tropical storm to make landfall in Texas this upcoming year. 54% of a hurricane making landfall in Texas. And I highlighted this one, 38% for tropical storm in Nuñez County. And for people that don't know Nuñez County, that's where Corpus Christi is at, the county seat there, and of course, where our new assets are at. So that's something that we definitely have to keep a close eye on, especially as we go through this upcoming season here. All eyes are definitely going to be on the tropics. So I will turn it over to Benny Edrich.
Well, thank you, Brian. Okay, so what I'd like to do is start out by introducing my help I've brought in today. Our plant leaders are here. These folks are the ones that have put this plan in motion, and they and their teams are completing the activities we need to do to make our plan successful for this summer. So if it's okay, what I'd like to do, I'll call each of them out, and they can stand up. And I'd like to start with Gary Hans. Okay, Gary leads our Rio de Gallos organization. Brian DeWolff, Brian leads our maintenance team at Summers. Edwin Martin, Edwin leads our maintenance team at Calaveras Spruce.
Rich Olson. Rich has responsibility for Brannig, AVR, and MB East Peakers. Norm Duperron. Norm has responsibility for Corpus Assets. Glenn Anison. Glenn has responsibility for Laredo Assets. Danny Tesh. Danny's our manager at our Oasis Bay Plant. Finally, Mark Higgin. Manager at our Barney Davis Plant. Thank you all for being here with us today. This, we took this slide from ERCOT, wanted to share it with you today, and it's a little bit old news in that we, we say that ERCOT is relying on non-dispatchable generation to serve summer demand. It, you know, actually started a year, a little over a year ago. Bottom line is that that continues, and we're seeing good build-out in the renewable sector. Want to call your attention to that bow wave you see out there to the right called future generation, generation growth opportunity. You heard Elena mention it, you've heard Rudy mention it many, many times. There is a lot of potential growth out there that we have to be prepared for. Fortunately, the actions you all have directed us to take are putting us in a very good position to deal with that, but there's a lot more to do. So we, we have a lot of work ahead of us. Our Energy Supply and Market Operations Team has responsibility for commercializing our plants in the market. They sell our plants in every day, and they buy the power we need to meet the needs of our customers every day. Their summer readiness program is outlined here. They get our demand response programs tested, ready to go, working with Jonathan's team. They make sure that reserve capacities are all sorted out and available, and we know what's where when we need it. They complete reviews of our fuel supply requirements, our contracts, checking with our suppliers to make sure we're good. Coordinate with the natural gas pipeline operators to make sure there's no issues there. Bottom line is, this team has done the things they need to do, and are ready to respond to changing market conditions, including any challenges we experience with our plants or other plants in the system. Our PG team has a pretty evolved program. This, this program's been in use for a long time. They've continued to work to improve it. Bottom line is, we start with our equipment, our systems, supply audits, training, inspections, weekly fleet-level progress reviews are completed, and finally, on the June 1st, we'll be certifying to ERCOT. We'll go through the season, responding to things as needed, and then we use the lessons learned process to improve our process.
All righty.
The plants in Corpus follow the same program. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Richard Medina to talk a little bit about it.
And I'm going to ask all colleagues, except you, Rudy, because you're the CEO, if we can hold our questions towards the end for each three presenters, only because we're running a little behind on time.
The only thing I was going to mention is, based on feedback that, you know, that has been given, you know, pretty universally, you know, what you're seeing, you know, when ERCOT communicates, is that they're communicating more frequently, which is something, quite frankly, that's been a challenge in the past. It was a challenge during Yuri, and with Pablo Vegas, the new CEO, he's not so new, he's, he and I came in about the same time. Pablo's doing a much better job, you know, with his team, with them being more transparent. And so they're putting more information out, which we follow suit in communicating to our community. So, so even though it feels like, you know, there's more messaging about the status of the grid, that's by design. And we want our community, you know, and across the entire state, to have the information they need about real-time status of the grid. So that's something that I think you all, you know, that everybody feels, but it's a step in the right direction. And I just kind of want to point that out, because you're going to see lots of messaging coming out of ERCOT, and I think that's a good thing for the Texas market.
Richard?
All right, so good afternoon. I'll go ahead and I'll start out introducing my team. So there on the left, you can see is Daryl Clifton. He's our Vice President of Construction and Maintenance. He's not here today, he's actually in Houston with our crews. We sent over about 50 crew members to the Houston area to go help with restoration. So they're working out there in the heat, trying to restore power. You know, Center Point did have about 900,000 customers out at one period, and now they're down to 200,000. So it's still going to be several more days before they restore power in that area. Next is Leroy Perez, he's here in the audience. He's our VP over operations in our System Operations Group. Rick Modonato, he's our VP of Transmission Distribution Engineering and Grid Modernization. He couldn't be here today with us. And then I got Richard Luhan, he's here in the audience. He's our VP over the gas distribution, distribution system. So next, similar to Benny, all our crews, you know, go through their summer preparedness. A lot of the summer safety topics include all the hydration, making sure their PPEs all ready to go. We have all the hydration stuff for the crews. We also look at snake and insect bites and all the prevention, just because it's hot out there, and a lot of critters are out there running around. Also, generation backfeed is important, because as power goes out, there's a lot of people not with generators that will feed back to the grid, and it's a hazard, which our crews are seeing a lot in Houston, just because of all the restoration efforts. And then, of course, we look at all our vehicles, make sure they're all up and running for the summer months, making sure we have fire extinguishers and everything on the vehicles, and they're all ready to go. And then on the system side, you know, we do work with ERCOT. ERCOT manages the entire transmission system, but we have transmissions engineers that kind of look at the power flows on our portions of the transmission lines and work with ERCOT on that portion. All our substations are inspected, and we have to turn in also by June 1st that we're ready with all our summer preparedness for all the substation work. And then throughout the summer, ERCOT did put a requirement in that all substations are inspected every month. And then on the distribution system, you know, we look at all the circuits, make sure they're all, all the, all the maintenance is done, and they're completed for the summer. And then the last slide is here, is just, you know, our system operations teams are always making sure that we're ready for load shed in the event something happens. And just as a reminder, you know, load shed can happen at any time. It's not just when, when the supply and demand are out of whack. It, it happens for reliability issues, too. So a lot of training with ERCOT. You can see all the training, both for just operations training, load shed, black start training, and then also drills with the city and the county. Yeah, oops. Next, I'll turn it over to Deanna.
Thank you, Richard. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm proud to be here today to talk about the customer strategy preparedness for summer readiness. So I'll do a little bit of the same and introduce you to my team members, if you don't already know them. So Anne Cannard, she leads our Customer Experience Team. That's really where we get all our data and reporting and insights from our customers. Kristin Wagner, she leads our Electric Metering Team, so all the data that we get from the AMI meters, making sure that they're, those meters are still functioning, as well as customer, customer revenue, and our call centers and walk-in centers. We have Carmen Nilson. She leads two big organizations. One is mainly focused on the new construction, so if a new customer, or if a customer wants some, something expanded, or if we have a large commercial customer that's moving here, her team leads that effort, as well as the managed and military accounts. Then we have KJ Fetter, who leads everything for our corporate responsibility and community engagement. We talk a lot about the, the crew team, and they're part of that, but it's even a larger organization, and part of that is public safety and education that we really focus on during the summer months. Then you, then we have Melissa Cerola, who leads our Corporate Communications and Marketing Team. And I'll talk a lot, a little bit more about the cool stuff that her and her team has planned. And then the last team is under Trish Villa. Trish leads a group that sits in the control room with Richard's team, so that we have more up-to-date in-the-moment updates for every emergency situation, whether it's an outage or the potential of load shed. But what we really want you to know is that we have about 600 team members and customer organization, and we are all ready and prepared to help our nearly 1 million customers as we go into the summer. Our key focus areas are customer empowerment. We want to make sure that we're equipping our customers with knowledge to make informed decisions through clear communication and readily available resources. We also want to make sure we're being good community partners. We have extended our commitment by fostering more partnerships and making sure that we have a positive impact in San Antonio, even when we know the bills are the highest for our customers. And lastly, summer safety. We have prioritized internal training for our employees, as well as making sure that we have the right collection activities during any key extreme weather emergencies. Here, you'll see kind of a refresher on the campaign that we had last year, and we're going to continue to work through, and, you know, you heard Richard and Benny talk about the work that they do to ensure that team members are safe. The Melissa and the Corporate Communications Team make sure that we have the right communication messages, both internally and externally, for, for us as we prepare to go through the summer. At the same time, we're making sure that we leverage the demand response programs that we have. We had a very successful year last year. We had commercial customers that continue to step up to help reduce the burden on our residential customers, both through our demand response program and through a voluntary program, and we're continuing those relationships and making sure that we are in contact with those largest of customers, as well as making sure that our residential customers know what available products and services that they have to control their own usage, and not just reduce their bill, but also have positive impact on the grid. And then lastly, as Rudy had mentioned, making sure that we're partnering with the key agencies. ERCOT is one of the primary ones, but making sure that we're in contact with the Public Information Officers over in the city, the county, and wherever else that we need to provide information. And lastly, I'll talk about our summer conservation campaign. We have done a lot of work, and you saw last year, we had the red, yellow, and green. We also, after that campaign, we went and surveyed customers, we did focus groups, did all kinds of things to get customer feedback, and trying to figure out how do we enhance our message, but still keep it simple and easy. And we're trying to make it creative and a little bit fun, but at the same time, make it meaningful to customers. So you will see here that we have a summer campaign. It's likely to change. We haven't finalized everything, but one thing that we're not going to change is the presence in the community. We were there at HEBs and other grocery stores, we're looking at opportunities to be at gas stations, whenever you're filling up gas, so that you know what to do, how to save, continuing the other things that we did, as well as the, like at the Via bus stops, anywhere that we can get the message out, we will. We continue to be at, on average, 10 places every day, Monday through Saturday, working in the community, trying to connect customers with support, and find the most, most available options for them. But overall, we are confident that our comprehensive approach will empower customers, strengthen our community partnerships, as well as ensuring a safe and informed summer season. Thank you.
All righty, I'll open up for any questions, comments. Dr. Ramiro?
I have two questions. The first one's for you, Deanna. Last year, I pushed back a little bit on the messaging, where it said something like, you should keep your thermostat at 72, and I felt like that was awfully low. Are we changing that messaging? And then I was also thinking, it's cooler in here now, but it's usually warm in here, which is good. It should be warm in here at CPS headquarters. Not terribly warm, but I just, aside from demand response, I wondered if we can be role models to tell the community, you know, this is where we generally keep our offices, and this is what we recommend, where we recommend you keep your home thermostat. So are we changing it from 72?
We, what we're really trying to do is change the message of, especially during demand response, can you help us by lowering it just a degree or two? Or two degrees will help significantly, or raise it, I'm sorry, raise your, the temperature by a degree or two, because we don't want to tell people what's appropriate for them based on their situation, but we do want to see if we can get a little bit of assistance. So it's targeting to just by a couple of degrees, and less by the, the actual temperature. We do have recommendations that we will continue to put out, and we keep it, I would defer to facilities, I know, and we try to set the example by what we do and what we keep it in here. So I think that's one thing that you'll see us all wear less suits during the summer, so that whenever it gets nice and warm in the afternoon, we understand what we're asking our customers to experience.
And I think the recommendation generally is 78 degrees, but, you know, it varies from person to person. But, you know, when we talk conservation, you know, we talk, you know, anything below 70 degrees increases, one degree below increases your, you know, your electric bill exponentially, but, you know, as Deanna said, everybody's different.
Yeah, I understand the sensitivity. First, people don't have to do what we ask them to do. So I think if we put a number out there that was above 72, it would be most helpful. My, my second question is, is pretty big, and I don't know if this is the time to talk about it, but I did want to raise the question about the reports that a lot of people have seen and may be confused about with, with the distribution logjam into San Antonio, and how that's going to impact the summer. Is it possible we can help to clarify that messaging to people a little bit, to explain how that relates and doesn't relate to everything that you're doing for the summer?
So you're talking about the ERCOT notifications? Yes. So ERCOT did put some notices out that there is issues on some of the transmission system, just because power flows are changing. So as power plants close, and as renewables are being built, all the powers, the power flows are shifting. And so what we saw last summer was that when the wind in the west stopped blowing, all the wind in the south is coming up the transmission line south through us, and then going to the major cities. And so the way ERCOT models the transmission systems is they're all interconnected, and they, they model it where if a transmission line goes down, they're always looking at what happens next? What happens to the grid? Is it stable? Is it not stable? And so they're looking at, hey, if this happens, what happens next? If a power plant trips, what happens if a power plant trips and a transmission line trip? And so they're modeling all these, and then what they're noticing is that when certain situations happen, there's a lot of power flowing from the south, and if a line trips, it may put us in an, in an area where it could destabilize some of the power in the south Texas. And then, so what ERCOT's doing is they're just saying, hey, we're going to ask everybody to kind of reduce power during these events, and in the event there's an issue, they might go to load shed. And so there's a, there's a lot of projects. ERCOT has issued tons of projects to rebuild transmission systems. They just take a long time. And so over the past couple of years, ERCOT did issue us at switching station, which is Howard Road, some new transmission lines going to the south, what's going to help with that congestion, and then rebuilds of new transmission lines. So we have about half a billion dollars' worth of projects of just rebuilding transmission systems just for us, including all the south Texas transmission lines that are being built. In addition, ERCOT's just taking a broad view of the whole system as a whole, and also looking at, hey, where do we need to put more transmission corridors?
And that happens, you know, every summer. You'll, you might see a localized, you know, road, you know, load shed event in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, or in Houston, you know, or here, potentially. It hadn't happened, you know, as long as I can remember, but in that moment, we have a different message for customers impacted than we do when it's a system-wide, you know, load shed event, you know, due to a local constraint, you know, that's not the result of our plants going down or anything like that. You know, you're going to see rotating outages for the next couple hours. So we, we do have specific messaging when that happens, but again, you know, to Richard's point, the modeling ERCOT does is looking for any contingency that could create a situation, and trying to communicate about it. But those are real technical, you know, moments that are real difficult to explain to the community, that we're trying to figure out what's the simplest way we can explain that, hey, you're going to see this impact for the next couple hours while the constraint resolves itself.
And so, yeah, so I just want to be clear in my own statement, that this has, this is not about us not responding to the increased demand, because as the previous presentation showed, we are absolutely responding to that. It is just part of us being required to be part of, yeah, this very complex system. And so, please, read the whole story, if you see it in a newspaper, online, not just the headline, which can often be alarming and a little bit misleading.
Yes, that's correct. And, and like Rudy mentioned, I think ERCOT's just doing more messaging so that the public is aware of what's happening.
Thank you. Any other comments by trustees? Before we conclude, and we don't need to answer today, but maybe, Deanna, I'm going to kind of meet with you. I get a lot of calls from senior citizens and local distressed communities. One of them seems to still be, when people decide to get solar panels, there's still a significant amount of scammers out there, and so then they end up looking to CPS, like, why don't you make it clear that these, you know, so again, we're running a little late, but I do want to meet with you to figure out what the messaging is, what we can do to improve, to educate our the messaging is, what we can do to improve, to educate our community about when they make a decision to go with a solar, I guess, panel provider, like a checklist. I do feel like we do need to have a responsibility to educate as best as we can. I understand once they make that decision, that's not our purview, but it is for us to at least help them distinguish who might be preferred vendors or the things you need to do. Because I do get a lot of calls and I've been getting a significant amount from senior citizens that don't understand they're signing a commitment and then they give their money down and then they're stuck with panels that don't work. So we can table that for later, but if we can work on that, I would really appreciate that.
Absolutely. We do have a list of registered vendors, so we can start there and then happy to meet with you.
Yeah, I'm just saying with more summer, they may opt to want to do these. People might want to take advantage to do that during this time. So I'm very grateful that we're educating people, different alerts and payment plans. This is just another item that I believe that requires just as much as attention than all the other ones.
Yes, and if I could just follow up to Dr. Ramirez's question, the temperatures that we're recommending during summer is 78 and during winter is 68.
All righty. Okay, if we can go ahead and move, and I want to thank everybody who presented on summer readiness. And I just, again, it's true, I forgot to give a shout out to those crews in Houston and their families. And our hearts go out to the Houston community and I'm glad that we're in a position to be able to be there for them. And so again, if we can move to item number nine, which is a CEO recognition.
So in the spirit of your update today, Madam Chair, I'm going to recognize a few different groups and they'll come up as I recognize them, but we'll take one big picture with everybody. The last couple of months have been really busy ones. To celebrate big wins, today I'm going to be recognizing our CPS Energy team members who had a part in securing the $2.5 million DOT FEMSA grant, the core team members who helped close on both our Corpus Christi and Laredo acquisitions as approved by the board, as well as the STP deal. Pretty much the same groups worked on those two deals. And our debt management team, who's led the effort to stabilize our credit rating, which has been a three-year endeavor that is a lot easier said than done. So as we previously announced, we received a $2.45 million grant aimed at replacing aging local gas infrastructure from the Department of Transportation and the Pipeline and Hazardous Material Safety Administration. The infrastructure that will be replaced as part of this grant is located on the west side of town and is being replaced as part of our efforts to modernize gas infrastructure in need of upgrades. Again, our endeavor into the grant world has been a culture shift by the organization and we will be back at FEMSA in the coming year to continue to look for grant dollars to help offset what we ask of our customers. So for the FEMSA folks, thank you all for your efforts. While close to 200 employees work to close both our Corpus Christi and Laredo acquisitions as well as our STP deal, today we are recognizing the core team that helped secure 1,710 megawatts of generation located in the south zone of the ERCOT market and the acquisition of additional 2% ownership of STP, which will still need to go through the Nuclear Regulatory Commission approval process and the long-term PPA for an additional 200 megawatts of firm capacity that will be available for CPS Energy customers this summer. These steps mark a growing role as CPS Energy as a regional energy utility and the teams work tirelessly to make these deals happen. Individually, these deals were complicated. Together, it just exacerbated the level of complexity that it took to execute what was forward-thinking, long-term strategies on behalf of our community. So again, to all the teams that worked, very difficult, Veronica going down, trying to get our new employees to sign on the dotted line and join the CPS organization. It was a lot of work and that work continues. Now we're in transition mode, trying to get those assets brought into our system and running them the way we run our assets and there's still work to be done there. Lastly, our debt management team leads our efforts with our rating agencies and their hard work has paid off as all three agencies have either reaffirmed or revised our outlook to stable. We enjoy some of the best interest rates in the energy market. We're the largest municipal-owned electric and gas utility in the country. We meet every time we go to market. We meet with the rating agencies to update them on our strategy and give them updates on the various impacts to our business. Moving our outlook to stable is a recognition that we have a strategy, that we're capable of executing our strategy. And the rate cases we have received, which is one thing Corey did not mention, there used to be a comment about a lack of community support for rate increases. That comment is no longer in there because we have been thoughtful about not just when we're coming in for rate increases, but the amount we're asking for and how we back up the proof that it is necessary in those moments. Moving from negative to stable outlook is an accomplishment I am probably most proud of. We've spent a lot of time talking about this around this DIAS and it is an indication that our strategy is right and that we have a willingness and ability to execute it. So for all of the strategic work that we have been doing over the last three years, team, thank you. Well done. Congratulations.
Again, I just want to reiterate a lot of what the current CEO at CPS has stated and I really want to thank my colleagues and our mayor. None of this would have been possible without making some really tough decisions, working together, and even when we don't agree, I think that's all a part of the process. And again, I want to thank those, again, my fellow colleagues. For those of you who asked the tough questions, thank you. For those of you who challenge us, thank you. And for those of you who bring a unique perspective, whether it's on the gas side or whether it's on sustainability, thank you. This is not done in a vacuum. This requires tough questions, both from citizens and from trustees. And I want to thank everybody from the CEO to the mayor to every trustee that's here. And guess what? As a small business owner, I always tell my people, so we want a contract. Good. Celebrate today, get back to work because today it's good, tomorrow's a new day. And so I do think it's important that we're very mindful that things can quickly change and it's not about being negative. It's the reality. We live in a very dynamic world where we have wars going on, inflation is high, weather extremes. I mean, anything can go wrong. So I want to again stress the need to be diligent and not to take for granted the hard work this past three years. It shouldn't take another major setback for us not to be on top of our game. We need to always be on top of our game. So again, thank you, colleagues, our mayor, the leadership at CPS and Rudy. On that note, for executive session, there's no items. If we can go ahead and move to reviewing open items.
Yes, ma'am. We had eight open items from executive session. Four are closed as of today. Four will close at the June 17th risk committee meeting and board committee meeting, those same days. Today, I have two new action items. I have a request from trustee Steen to add the in-service and planned retirement dates to the Vision 2027 slides on generation planning. And I have, the second one is also from trustee Steen and then as to include his concerns in the minutes on agenda item number seven.
One more, which is mine, which again, I'm good with 2021, but not until we vet it for facts. There were some statements in there that might not be factual statements.
Yes, ma'am. I'll include that at number two.
Yeah. Just want to make sure. And again, can we be clear again, the items that will be addressed at the next sessions? I think you mentioned risk and what was the other one?
The remaining four open action items were open in executive session, so I won't give details now. Those four will close at the June 17th risk committee meeting and board committee meeting. Sorry, board meeting.
No, I just want to make sure that trustees know that they will be addressed in the following month. Okay? I think that's pretty much it. We went over those items. Is there a motion to, and again, there will be no executive sessions, we have no items to discuss, they'll be addressed at the next board meeting, the next special meeting, risk meeting. And if we can go ahead and move to item number 12, which is a German. Second, second by Maggie, meeting is concluded. O2 is the time. Thank you, everybody.